I'm about to share this, give me one second. Give me one second. Just waiting on it to load right now. I do apologize. When I was on the last live, it didn't, it only showed me one group of questions. It didn't show me all the other questions that everybody else displayed. So I'm doing another one. I am doing another one. I'm doing another one. About to share it. About to see how I'm able to see the questions. Now let me see if there's a way that I can set this up to properly see when the questions come in. Give me one second. Give me one quick second. Going to, no, I can't do that. Because I want to be able to see whenever you all ask questions because it won't show me on here for some reason. So you guys can, whoever's in here, you can go ahead and start asking your question. If I didn't answer it the last time, I do apologize, it wouldn't show me and stuff. So I'm looking for an area where I can view the questions now. So if you do have questions, go ahead and put it in the, in the comments section, the comment area. Then I'll view the questions. Let's see how this works, how it goes. Let me silence this. I'll be looking for my phone too. To see. Give me one second. I'm looking to see, so if you have any questions or if you're here, just put a dot in the comments section so I can view right there to see who was on in these areas. And when I start seeing questions, I'll answer. Just waiting on it to load. My phone's being slow. Okay, I see people joining. I'm able to see people joining. Somebody, some of you, if you can, just put a dot in the comment area so I can see if I'm able to see these questions. If you will, please. Okay, thank you. Okay. I have it set up now. If you guys have any questions and I didn't answer your question on the last live, do ask them down here so I can see them. Because for some reason, again, I apologize, it wouldn't let me see them in the last one. So I'll just sit here, wait, silence. Oh, if you guys want to learn about the Book of Revelation, be sure to get this. This is excellent to have, excellent study. You know, have evangelism books as well. Complete Evangelism Guidebook, real good book. This is another good book. You're Interested in Learning the Hebrew? This is a really good Hebrew book too. So yep, I would turn the computer and show you all the books that I have, but I can't turn the computer like that. So, you know, there's a lot of good books. Josephus, Jewish Historian. Chuck Missler, Cosmic Codes. Defeating Dark Angels is my favorite warfare book of all time. Yeah, and you could never go wrong with Perry Stone book. So yep, I'm just waiting until I see questions in the comments section. Whatever questions you all asked on the last one, if you're on here, ask them in this one. Because I wasn't able to see and reply and respond in the video to the other questions and stuff. So if you have any questions, ask in the comments section. Again, I apologize that I did not see your questions in the last one. I caught it at the very, very last second. I'm going by this too, so I'm going to be looking at both to see if I'm able to find any questions. Okay, baptized by fire as in the Holy Spirit, you mean? Like I'm being filled with the Holy Spirit? And tell me what you mean by professionally done as well? Okay. When you were baptized in the Holy Spirit, what did you notice during, before, during, and afterwards? What were the manifestations that took place? My phone's being slow too, so I'm looking for my phone and the computer to see. It's on here. Okay, I'm being baptized in fire by the Holy Spirit. According to Book of Acts, chapter two, we see the fire, tongues of fire. We see it was accompanied by speaking in tongues, though that's not the only sign. That was the one that Scripture provided. Well, I know when I got filled with the Holy Spirit, it was like I felt like literal fire was going inside of me. My body temperature literally changed. I started sweating. And felt like literally, literal fire was going inside of me. So the Holy Spirit, when He fills you, a lot of times it's fire that you fill. A lot of times it's fire. He manifests himself in the form of fire, though he's also known as water. But fire, and you know, so that was with me. In Scripture, we see that when people are baptized by fire, it's usually accompanied by speaking in tongues as well as, you know, just feeling fire. So I would see if I can, you know, try again. Do you have any like other experiences with it? Because I believe that, you know, the more, how can I explain this? How can I explain this? A person can be saved without being filled with the Holy Spirit. As in baptized with the Holy Spirit. When you get saved, the Holy Spirit is then, He seals your heart for the day of redemption. He seals your heart, but being baptized in the Holy Spirit is another thing. You can experience the Holy Spirit without the baptism of the Holy Spirit. You can feel certain manifestations, things like that. But the baptism is whenever His fire, it's almost like liquid fire ignites inside of you when you have different manifestations. You're either crying, or you know, typically fire, or you know, as Ms. York said, you know, you feel light, or you know, different things, you know, like that. The baptism, it does different things because He's removing impurities and different things as such from you so you could feel light, you know, different things, whatever. Refreshed because word for revival that Peter uses, times are refreshing, refreshed, revival. I will pour out my spirit on all flesh. Displaying the element of water likened to a spirit being poured out so you could feel refreshed. You know, different things like, like that, excuse me. So yes, that's typically, you know, what it's like to get baptized in the Holy Spirit. But I, you know, still seek just the case again. Try to again. Loading this up too, my phone, if I'm able to properly. Let's see. Okay, if you have any more questions, ask on here. I'm going to start going off of these questions too that I'm looking at from the one that didn't show up. And then if the people look, then I'll just, you know, answer on here and stuff. Okay. Alexandria said, I don't know what questions have been asked already, this was the other. But I have a friend who isn't sure what to believe in. The Bible has been written and rewritten a lot, is what they say. This is the thing, people, they really don't understand Scripture. They think that the Bible has been rewritten and rewritten and that it's lost in translation. It's not. Simply put, when you take a look, all Scripture, according to Scripture is, you know, inspired by God. Whatever's in the Bible is meant to be there. Let me say that first and foremost. The second thing is, when you take a look at the Torah or the five books of Moses in the Old Testament, and you know, all of those, those have been kept in like, literally, they have been in safekeeping. When the Jews take care of Scripture, they take care of Scripture. To the point, if they're writing Scripture, listen now, if they're writing Scripture, and while they're writing Scripture, if they mess up on it, they'll eliminate that whole Scripture. They won't even burn it. They'll take it and bury it because it still is, it's still holy to them and sacred. If they're writing, and a king walks in the room, they can't even turn to acknowledge the king. If one little thing gets messed up, it's out of there. So translation in the writing of Scripture is not lost. You know, they take heavy important precautions when they're doing it. Now you have the Hebrew scriptures, you have the Old Testament, which was written in Hebrew and Aramaic, given Ezra and Daniel. So when we get to the New Testament, we see it's written in Greek or coined in Greek. We see that's what it's written in. So because of this, people say, well, it's been mistranslated. Look, whenever you get to it, you have translation and transliteration. The Hebrew scriptures and the Greek scriptures were transliterated and translated into English so we can read. For example, if we go to the Hebrew, we don't see the letter J. The letter J is not in the Hebrew. It is not in the Hebrew. So the Hebrew, Christ's Hebrew name is Yahshua, or you know, Yahshua. You see the name of the Father's Yahweh. Yodhaibabeh is the tetagrammaton for the name of God in the Hebrew. But when you get it to the, um, English transliteration, you could still say, you know, Yahshua, or you could say Jesus because that's a transliteration of the word. Like if I translate my name to Hebrew, my name is William Jackson. My last name won't be Saint Jackson. If I translate it to Hebrew, it's going to be Yaxton or something to do with, you know, just, you know, Y taking place of the letter J. So you know, they have to translate it into a language so people can understand, but it doesn't lose its essence. It doesn't lose its meaning. A matter of fact, the Bible says to study, to show ourselves a proof. So each word that's in the Bible, we go and look at the Greek and the Hebrew original word meanings to see what they mean. And typically, they mean the same thing of the English word on the offset or on the face of it, but then they have deeper, more depth meanings in it. Excuse me. More in-depth meanings of it. So that's the first thing. Second thing, a lot of people think is that King James wrote the Bible. King James didn't write the Bible. He had people, and he oversaw a translation of the Scriptures. A translation. God can use sin. They'd be like, oh, King James, he was a sinner. He wrote the Bible. No, listen, he didn't write the Bible. The Holy Spirit authored the Bible. In the sixty-six, or the forty different authors, Moses, Jeremiah, Isaiah, Paul, Matthew, Luke, Mark, David, Solomon, you have Malachi, Hosea, you know, and the different prophets of the Scripture. You have forty different writers of the Bible, but one author, the Holy Spirit. King James just translated it, translated it. And we know in Scripture that God uses, He will even use demonic spirits to accomplish His purposes. He did that with First Kings twenty-two, Job chapter one, Job chapter two. So if people want to whine about King James translating the Bible, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just keep it at that. But so that's, that, yeah, just make sure you tell them it has not been rewritten. It's, it's good. Somebody said, those not filled with the Holy Spirit, will they be left behind? Um, I like that question because it's not a simple answer. Scripture says, Luke twenty-one thirty-three, twenty-one thirty-six. Watch and pray so you may be able to escape. All that's to come on the earth and stand before the Son of Man. I believe that's the Scripture. Revelation three ten. For those who have kept the command of perseverance, I will also keep them from the hour of trial, which will test all those who dwell upon me earth, right? So in order to be taken, you must watch. You must pray. You must have a great level of endurance in Christ, and you may be, so you can be counted worthy according to Luke twenty-one thirty-six. So the question now goes to, can you do these things without, without the Holy Spirit? Can you watch? Can you pray effectively? Are you able to be counted worthy, are you able to endure the testing and trials of life without the Holy Spirit? According to Scripture, it's biblical to be filled with the Holy Spirit baptized in the Holy Spirit because He's the one that empowers us to do these things. So I would like to encourage to even not take the chance on it, even if one person thinks that they, you know, could do it without the Holy Spirit. That's the wrong mindset. That's a left behind mindset. My take on it is, the Holy Spirit helps us to do these things and help us to be able to endure the testing, trials, and different things like that. So I believe we need the Holy Spirit, yes. I believe that we need the Holy Spirit based on that answer and how things are like that. Let me see what other questions. We're on here. Somebody said, Mandy said, how do you handle other believers who are bent on saying you're receiving not from God and constantly trying to expose you when you tell them what God has revealed to you by word visions or dreams? They tell you it's not Scripture, word for word, although you show them how it does, I know Scripture. If they call it the Bible, then they're already hypocrites. If they say that, but then they call the Bible, the Bible, they're hypocrites because the Bible is not in Scripture. But if they believe in the Trinity, the Trinity's not in Scripture. However, we believe the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. If they believe that God called them to pastor, guess what's not in Scripture? God's saying, God says, John, go pastor. That's not in Scripture either. So if they say that God told them to go pastor, but yet they're telling you that what you saw is not word for word in Scripture, you can point right back at him and say, well, the Bible says this and such is not in Scripture because not everybody's called a pastor. So if you're pastoring or whatever you're doing, and God, and God, it's not directly divinely written out your name word for word here, then boom, we're in the same boat, aren't we? We're in the same boat. So you know, that's, that's what I say to some people. Other times, you know, certain things aren't directly written out in Scripture. People think that something has to be exactly word for word in Scripture. John says that every work that Jesus did was too much that it didn't even fit in Scripture. The mindset is not supposed to be if it's spelled out exactly word for word in Scripture. The question is, does it contradict what Scripture says already? If it contradicts what Scripture says already, that's an automatic elimination for Revelation. And typically speaking, a lot of what people say contradicts Scripture really doesn't. They just don't have an open mind to what Scripture says because, ah, what's a Scripture that? What's something, if you guys think of something, let me know. What's something that people say contradicts Scripture that's, that doesn't really contradict Scripture? Some people say, well, you have to be baptized in order to be saved and go to heaven. That, they say, if you say anything else, it contradicts Scripture just because Mark sixteen says, if you, or say, if you, let me go to the Scripture because I don't want to misquote him, Mark chapter sixteen. Because I'm about to show you guys something. You have to pay attention to the words. Some things not word for word, but you still have to pay attention to the words and stuff. Mark chapter sixteen, this verse discusses when Christ rose from the dead. Scroll down. Go into all the world, Mark sixteen fifteen, and preach the gospel to every creature, sixteen. He who believes in is baptized will be saved, but he who does not believe will be condemned. They use that to say, if you are not baptized and you're not saved, read it again. Because it says, if you are not, if you believe and are baptized, you will be saved. Salvation is a continuous work, but it says, if you do not believe, you will be condemned. Believing is the very foundation to salvation. So you have people that say that stuff contradicts Scripture when it really doesn't. They just don't read exactly, you know, what it says there. But everything word for word that God says is not exactly drawn out in Scripture. However, look to see if it contradicts Scripture. If it contradicts Scripture, then no, don't even go with it. Let me see what else. Oh yes, amen, Ms. York, to, you know, Jesus being God and He forgave people, amen. How do you win or help some people who looks for contradictions or the Bible to be false? What you do, you present, these, these type of people are typically fact, either fact-based people or they're only fact-based people who only want fact based on their outlook and opinion because their pride won't allow them to see anything else. If they're the latter, they won't listen either way. But if they really want fact, give them historical fact. Jesus was a real person. A lot of people don't know that Jesus was a real person. Roman history calls him a real person. You see Josephus, Jewish historian, notes him as a real person. Josephus, Jewish historian, says that Jesus was put to death at the hands of Pilate. Says that he had different followers, and he even says that he was seen alive walking three days later. You see even other, that, other historians, the Babylonian Talmud calls a man named, speaks of a man named Yahshua, and it says that he was put to death because of apostasy, which, you know, you know, that's in the Bible because the Pharisees say that Jesus is leading people into apostasy. They said that he had a devil. The Babylonian Talmud said this was happening. The Bible says that's what happened, but they mistook what he was doing. Throughout history, Jesus does exist. Throughout history, people noted Jesus' existence. You also see other people, they, you know, they're talking about that they want facts. Science proves God. A lot of people don't even know it. You take a look, oh, the Big Bang is how it happened. Well, what happened with the Big Bang? Out of nowhere, photons of light came. Photons out, listen now. The Big Bang says that photons of light came out of nowhere, filled up the universe, energy burst. Boom, that's how the universe came to be. So they think that just proves science, but no. Let's take a look in Genesis, chapter one. And we take a look at, then, in the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. The earth was without form and void, and it was void, and darkness was on the face of the deep. The spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters, and it goes on to say, and God said, let there be light. Boom, there was light. Photons everywhere. You want the Big Bang? That is the Big Bang. So evolution, people say, oh, the man evolved from the same ancestors. We have the same characteristics as monkeys and these all other animals. Oh yeah, so evolution is real, the Bible is, and off. Shut that down. Evolution doesn't even make sense. Macroevolution at least, microevolution is different. Macroevolution saying that simply something like this book, if I leave this book sitting here over time, it will turn into a giraffe. That's basically what macroevolution says. That is false. That's not happening. That's a fairy tale. A matter of fact, there was a man who tried to recreate the process of evolution to disprove God, right? To disprove God and to prove the theory of evolution. But guess what? When he tried to do it, it failed. But do you know what it proved? It proved that a man or a creator had to try to force, to push evolution to take place. So guess what? Even if evolution was true, that still proves God because just by him trying to push it, to do it, it showed that somebody had to be behind it to do it. And guess what? That means that even if it was true, that God would have had to be behind it to do it. Let me tell you something else, what they say, which takes logic. If you take, dealing with fact-based people, if you want logic, try this. Let's say if I have a pen, right? Let's say if I have a pen, a sheet of paper. Here is a sheet of paper. I have a sheet of paper and a pen, and I just throw it at the, you know, just if I keep throwing it at this paper, if I take a pen and just keep throwing it at the paper, what does that leave? What does that leave? What does that leave? It leaves marks. It leaves marks. It leaves marks. But then if I take and I draw, don't mind my stick figure, they're ugly. I can't draw stick figures. They're ugly. It looks ugly. But yeah, that's my stick figure person, right? Look, it took, I want you to catch this and listen. Fact-based people want logic, right? Evolution says that no creator was behind it, that everything just evolved over time by itself. No need of a creator, and we just came to be. If I take a marker and I draw it at a board, right? It's going to leave marks like the pen on the sheet of paper, right? Why? Because that energy is not channeled properly. Energy that is not channeled is chaotic. So it leaves nothing but chaos and confusion, and it won't leave anything good. But however, if you want to take and you want to draw down to the very smallness of points, if you want to draw a stick figure or a person, you have to channel the energy. Draw the body, draw the legs, draw the arms, draw the eyes, draw the eyebrows, draw everything, right? Which shows that it takes channel, form of energy for an intelligent mind as the form of a human being to draw a stick figure or a drawing, right? That's what it takes. How much more does it take for something, forms of energy to have something with arms, legs, eyes, neck, toes, whatever, brain? The brain is so complicated that scientists haven't even figured it out fully yet. And we're so intelligent that we're figuring a bunch of stuff out here and, you know, within creation and all of that. But you want to tell me that if you, right now, the same chances you throw a marker at the wall, you want to tell me that that is supposed to not create anything and tell me that, oh yeah, there's chances of throwing the marker at the wall, yeah, yeah, whatever. Oh man, it'll be and stuff. But if I take the marker, though, at the wall, it's going to leave a few marks? You want to, you want me to accept that same mind frame of logic with the human beings and how human beings were created, saying that we just were accidents, cosmic accidents? We just came together. Oh, look at me, I'm building a block. Look, look at evolution, blah, blah, blah. Look human, look at this arm, look at these fingers. That's what you want me to believe? That, that complicated, confused energy that didn't even have a source put me together? That's what you want me to believe? If we go off that same logic, let me tell you what we're going to do then. How about you give me all of your money and you go out and blow these trees up outside? And with that same logic, watch it turn into money, and then you'll be rich and I'll have your money. Let's go off of that same logic with that, okay? Put your money where your mouth is. Let us do that. But if you don't want to do that, then you're not going off that same logic. Because if you go off that same logic, you could blow that tree up, and that tree will turn into some money, won't it? Yep. So let's put the money where the mouth is. If you believe that and you're watching that. I have a PayPal, I have a money app that you can send the money to, and that's absolutely fine because I'm working on ministry and stuff. So you know, we could do, I could do that because I believe that God did this stuff divinely, and you could believe evolution, which has nothing to do with that, okay? So that's what they want to believe. Also, if you even want to include that, let's take a look at this, shall we? We take a look at this. Let's say our, same, the same exact thing, right? The same exact model. It's a lot of stuff flowing in my head right now. I'm trying to gather because it's a lot of stuff that can disprove evolution. It is a ton of stuff. Darwin himself, he, he started to doubt evolution. He started to doubt it. He started to hate it. He hated evolution. He started to hate it. You look it up. He started to hate it. Plus, evolution is racist. Why? Because it teaches that one race is over the other race. I think it's funny that you have so many black atheists that hate God, that say that God isn't real, that want to believe in the theory of evolution, but yet evolution teaches that Europeans are over the black race. That's what evolution teaches, the survival of the fittest, that they were the fittest. I personally believe that all humans are created equal, but evolution is racist. But it's just funny and hypocritical how you have these black evolutionists who are so black power, but yet they believe evolution, which projects white power. But me, I'm Holy Ghost power because I believe that the power of the Holy Ghost created man and every being and beast on the earth. So you know, that's, that's one way to prove Scripture and to disprove evolution. And, you know, it's fact, because it's logic, it's logic, it's logic. Any logical person can see that. If they don't, then obviously they want to ignore that. And, you know, different things like that. Yes, and you guys can put your questions, any questions, the hard, because right now, I'm just in a hard question answering mood. Put your hard questions down there, and I'll treat it just like I'm talking to somebody in the street and stuff. The hard questions that you may encounter, because these, Lord Jesus, I'm gonna look for questions on here too. Yeah, go ahead. Let me write this. Oh, okay, I was just replying back to your comment, Jasmine. What does it mean to practice sin? Practicing sin basically means that you make a practice of sin. I'll use myself as an example. After I got saved, I couldn't continue in the practice of sin. What's the practice of sin? I would literally make a practice of cussing. I would create cuss words. I would tie that F word with the S word and different words together and make a whole new, brand new body of a cuss word. I would literally practice cussing, practice cussing, just practice. I would make a practice of witchcraft. I would have terror cards, sit with them on my floor, I would practice it. I'll literally go ghost hunting or spirit hunting as I know it now, take pictures of demons and spirits and stuff like that. I was making a practice of it. But once I got saved, the practice, then the Holy Spirit started convicting me, and he told me to start practicing the ways of righteousness. Anytime I wanted to curse, replace it with the word of blessing. Anytime I wanted to do this, replace it with something out of scripture. I started not practicing these things, just like how if you practice for basketball, or practice for football, you do all of these things to make you better at it, that's basically what practice is. When you see all these people out here, that's doing, you know, that's having sex, doing drugs, they make a practice of it, you know, watch porn, they constantly watch porn. I'm not speaking about the Christians with the weakness, I'm speaking of those who purposely practice it. You know, they go out, practice it without a care in the world. It's a sport to them, but practice, you make a sport of sin, you practice it. That's basically what it means, what I mean. And if you guys have any more questions, we should have put them down into the comment area as well. Lord Jesus, even the hard questions, if you guys can't think of hard questions, I'll just put them in a book or something and stuff. But yeah, they love the hard questions. Islam, how to encounter a Muslim, for example? Because Muslims, they don't believe Jesus is God nor the son of God. They believe he is one of the many sons of God, maybe, that depends which Muslim you're talking to. But they don't believe he's the son of God, they don't believe that he's God nor equal to God. However, when you read the Quran, I have a Quran somewhere down here, let me get it. I have a Quran right here. This Quran, it speaks of a lot of stuff. It perverts scripture, it perverts scripture. It's a lot of stuff in here. They speak about stuff about Jesus, they basically, I forgot what, where it is, what's it in. Anyway, speaks about Jesus, but it distorts his divinity and who he is. It distorts his divinity and who he is. And because of this, and it distorts who he is, guess what? They say that it's, Jesus is not God nor the son of God. However, they say that Jesus is the word of God. So this is the thing, they believe in a virgin birth, they believe that Jesus is the word of God. So when you talk to a Muslim, don't even start by asking them about Jesus. Start asking them about God. Be like, oh, you know, you think God is perfect, you know? And let me say this, you have some nice Muslims, you have some mean Muslims. The religion is what's evil, but the people of Islam, I know some very nice Muslims, very nice Muslims and stuff. So there are a lot of nice Muslims, as there are a lot of bad Muslims. And you have more modern Muslims than you have the more radical Muslims. The more radical is ISIS. However, the religion itself is radical. There are not, not all Muslims follow the full religion of Islam, if that makes sense. Just like not all Christians follow the fullness of the gospel. But you start off by, you know, asking them, do you believe that God is perfect? Yes, God is perfect, God is perfect, okay. You believe that God is eternal? Yes, God is eternal. Okay, do you believe that the word of God is perfect? Of course, the word of God is perfect. You believe the word of God is eternal? Yes, the word of God is eternal. Okay, do you believe the word of God, you know, is equal with God? Of course, of course. Then you bring at them, well, your Quran says that Jesus is the word of God, so is he perfect? Is he eternal? Is he equal with God? Then that puts them in a stump, because then they're like, wait, they're like, wait a second. If they're, you know, a prideful Muslim, they'll sit there and try to argue down, argue you down with it, like how some of them tried to do me. If it's, if they're not, they'll really take it into consideration and think about it. Other things, the virgin birth, they note that Jesus was born of a virgin, right? And that Jesus did not have an earthly father. They note that Jesus did do miracles, but when it comes to his death, they say that he did not die. They say that he did not die. A matter of fact, that most likely, Judas was made to look like Jesus, and he died in Christ's place, and Christ was sent back to heaven. That is what they believe, it's in here, that's what they believe. So, since they believe that, then you can bring it from this direction. Okay, Christ was born of a virgin, believe that, yes. Christ does miracles, yes. Christ, you know, he raised the dead, yes, he raised the dead. Okay, you believe all that, right? Well, let me ask you some questions about God, or you can start off with God. Does God do miracles? Yes. Does God raise the dead? Yes. Does God do this? Yes. Right? And then you bring up, you know, Christ and what, you know, I was just saying about Christ. Then you stump them with this, well, where did Christ get his blood from? Mary. But where did he get the, you know, the DNA and the blood from? Who gave him his blood? Oh, well, the spirit of God gave him his blood. The spirit of God put him inside of Mary, okay. Since the spirit of God gave him his blood, when you speak in natural terms, where do you get your blood from? Do you, where do you get your blood from? Oh, yeah, you know, the Father. Wallah, Christ got his blood from God, the son of God, he's the word of God, he's equal with God. So, you know, those are some ways, you know, with Islam. When I first heard the voice of God, how did I know it was his voice? When did I first hear the voice of God? I wasn't saved when I first heard his voice. I wasn't saved when I first heard his voice. Y'all don't mind what I just did, keep looking. When I first got saved, that's when I first learned his voice, that wasn't the Bible, by the way. Before I got saved, let me see. How can I, that wasn't the Bible, by the way, if you're putting an angry face, that wasn't the Bible. That wasn't the Bible. The very first time I heard his voice, I was dating a girl, and I had a dream, and I had a dream that she cheated on me, and she did something, you know, that she cheated on me. And the very next day, guess what? Found out she cheated on me. That was the very first time, from my recent understanding, right before I got saved, one of the first times that I've heard the voice of God. It was because I started to see things before they happened. It's not at the level that it is now, but it started out very, very, very faint. Very rarely does God talk to, talk in an audible, loud tone as I'm talking. A lot of times, it's through vision, trance, dream, you know, or impression, or, you know, something of the sort, something of the sort. Let's see. Any other questions before I get off of here? Any other questions? It's 5:14, I'll give until 5:16 to see if there's any questions that come up. If there's no more questions, I'll go ahead and get off and stuff. And if you guys didn't catch this, beginning, go back and watch, because evolution disproved, literally disproved. Y'all are out of there. Guys have any more questions? Be sure to ask. Y'all give one more minute before I get off. I'm talking because I get awkward when it's too much silence. To those that call me, I have fun with them. If you, people love to call me a false prophet all the time, even after I post stuff and it comes to pass and stuff, they still love to put, oh, you're a false prophet and stuff, and say, you're fake, you know, all that, blah, blah, blah. I sit there, I have conversations with them, you know, I ask them, I tell them I'm gonna delete them or block them. But I tell, I ask them, I'm like, tell me how I'm a false prophet, tell me how I am a false prophet. And they cannot get past that first question, they can't. Because for one, if they say, well, what you say doesn't come to pass, I just point them to the prophetic resume that I have up, or to the recent prophetic document, words that I've given with the fulfillment. If they say, oh, well, that doesn't mean you're a prophet, or, no, no, no. They say, no, they'll get on the prophetic fulfillments and be like, something about, hey, God bless you, thank you. They'll be like, well, that doesn't mean, you know, you're, I'm sorry, everybody's following this false prophet. Tell me how again, I'm false, give scripture to back it up, because I'm not, I'm not leading people away from Christ. The number one thing is Christ. I tell people when I prophesy that it's not me, it's Jesus giving me the word and speaking through me. It's him, see him so. Then after that, they want to know, does it come to pass? You want to know if it comes to pass? I have over, by the spirit of God, 150, and I don't say this boastful, because you have other prophets, and I'm not the only one that can hear God, I'm not, you have other prophets. There's nothing for me to boast in. You know, if anything, I boast in the name of Christ, like Paul said to do, but, you know, it's nothing to be boastful about. Boasting and pride mess up your hearing anyways and stuff. But I have over 150 plus prophetic words of documentation nationally that have came to pass, been shown, recent one, God showed me in October, he showed me this, I was looking down out the sky or something, and I saw babies falling from the sky like it was raining, and they flooded the ground. And God says, I was, I'm challenging abortion, and the enemies attempt to kill children. After that, Trump got elected, he put in ways to defund Planned Parenthood. And in addition to that, God doesn't only fulfill his word through one avenue, that's, that's one that he did. But in other ways, you notice this recent hurricane, Irma, when you look at it, it flooded the ground, it was rain, and it took the form of a baby. So God will literally, different times, show signs of what I prophesy in the sky or in the heavens, because it was his spirit that spoke and not me. Another time, at the beginning of the year, 27, end of last year, for the beginning of the year, 2017, I said the Lord told me in 2017 that he was gonna part the Red Sea again. I don't know what this means fully, but it's a sign, it represents supernatural deliverance among his people. This year, what did we see with Irma? I have the word up from last year, but what did we see with Irma? It literally caused the waters to recede. And what is everybody, you look, hundreds of people calling it the Red Sea, sign of the Red Sea, how Irma proves the exodus, Red Sea, Red Sea, Red Sea was the sign of the Red Sea. Other than, God told me there was gonna be another face in Irma, right before Irma. So I put it on, you know, Facebook, I had it, a matter of fact, I put it in a notebook too, on the 27th of August as well, and right before Irma. Face was in Irma, that's documented, all of that. So I point them to those, I point them to those, you know, different things like that. So because of that, you know, they simply, they, they just go and do a lot of yapping after that. So then I'll just sit and respond, use them as entertainment, laugh at what they say, because they can't come up with anything, and then I'll delete them and block them. A lot of people say, God bless you, thank you. A lot of people agree that Jesus was a real person, but say he had a mental illness, claiming to be God. Somebody usually say, well, these same people who say that, they say that Jesus is a good teacher, or is a good philosopher, or something, you know, of the sort. So then, if they say that, I say, where do you get that information up from? Well, we get it from the Bible, the Quran, you know, all these books together. Okay, you get it from the Bible? Well, if you're using the Bible, then you have to take everything that Jesus said together with what he said. He called himself teacher, yes, rabbi. He called himself the son of God. He called himself, he acknowledged himself as the prophet and as many other things, and as God. So if you acknowledge him as a great teacher and a great philosopher, and you take his words there, then you have to also acknowledge him as the son of God and as God in human flesh. Because if you don't, the good, the good teachings that he had, you are susceptible to falling in the same mental illness that he had, just by believing what he taught. You cannot take one part of the teaching of Jesus and say, that's Jesus, and I'm gonna not acknowledge that, because then that simply means that you're double minded, because you're picking and choosing. And who gave you the authority to pick and choose? And a lot of times, a lot of these people are the same people that say, well, let everybody live their truth, let everybody live their truth. Okay, if you let everybody live their truth in things like that, and you try to take the Bible and pick and choose what Jesus says, and that's an example of living their truth, and guess what? Rapists, should they live their truth? And raping people, should murderers live their truth and murdering people? And things like that, you only want to take the love gospel part of Christ, but not the wrath and the judgment part, and separate those and calling himself God, and you know, all of that, fitting with your double minded ways and stuff, for somebody to live out their truths? You accept that double mindedness, but you don't accept the one of a rapist. If you're gonna say one thing, mean it for the whole way, because guess what? That means that you have the mental illness now and not Christ. Yep, that's all with that. You are like the millionth person that told me that, Jasmine, I think I am. And which face, which face, which face creeped you out? And so, yeah, I'm, I'm probably gonna do online Bible studies now. I'll probably, they'll probably be every two weeks, maybe every week, if I can, every two weeks and stuff, you know, like that. I might do one tomorrow, who knows? Glory be to God, if God affords me the time, I may do one tomorrow. Because I'm putting the finishing touches on this book that I'm writing and stuff. So I'm only getting off for, you know, things like this and prophetic alerts and prophecies and stuff. So I might do online Bible studies. Everybody, man, I'm thinking that the Holy Ghost now wants me to do it, I'm praying about it and stuff. What, what book? I, I'll obviously want to choose the book of Revelation, because that's my favorite book. But, yeah, we could get together and vote and stuff. Oh, yeah, 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 that was a spirit, that was a spirit. It showed up that one, and there was another one too, that showed up and manifested in it. So, yeah, I might take a poll on, you know, what scriptures to study in the Bible and stuff. So, all right, you guys, I'm about to go ahead and get off and go ahead back to this book and stuff, put the final touches and all that nice stuff on it. I'm telling you all, the biggest chapter of the book is based on a revelation that the Lord solidified to me yesterday. I almost slipped up and said the name of the chapter. I want to say it, but I can't, the Holy Spirit told me not to say it or anything about it. However, I can tell you, just let me drink this water. This was the biggest revelation that God has ever given me since I got saved, that he has given me concerning salvation, him being God, and all of these things. It is going to be the biggest chapter in the book. I'm spending so much time with it, I'm just doing the finishing touches and stuff, but it is literally, it'll be the biggest chapter in the book, more than likely, or the second biggest, because chapter one is pretty big. Because in chapter one, I break down prophets, and I break down surprising facts that you may have not known about them, as well as their pitfalls, things like that. You know, just a little biography, you know, on them, it's called Walking Down the Ancient Pathways or something like that, chapter one. But the, chapter six, chapter six is going to be a mind blowing chapter. You will not, if you are like me, you will not be able to look at the gospel the same, you will not be able to look at your walk with Christ the same, scientifically, biblically proven. This perspective has my mind, I'm telling you all. Oh, man, I can't wait to release this, because you guys, y'all are gonna love it. It's, y'all are gonna love it. So you guys, I haven't really touched on it on Facebook and stuff. Seeing the part to the extent which I've received, I have not touched on Facebook. There is a lot of stuff in this book that I have never put on Facebook. Some stuff, yes, but a lot of stuff in this book I have never put on Facebook. So I'll let you guys and keep you updated for around the time, pre-orders and all of that. You guys will love it. Thank you for the support. May we continue to take the kingdom of God and go forth with the kingdom of God in strength. God bless you guys.